Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Brookline Select Board for Wednesday, May 20th, the time is 6:30 PM. First up is reviewing changes to the agenda, if any. I have no changes to the agenda. Gwen, do you have any changes?
No.
Shelby, do you have any changes?
Hold on. Okay, no, I don't think I have any changes. I didn't see anything about like the survey, but I wrote it at the very end last time and I just haven't had time to do it anyway, so.
Yeah, that is actually 7B, the COVID-19 infection.
I was looking for it, I didn't see it.
Okay.
So we can track down Fact, but yeah.
Okay.
That's all.
Joseph, any changes to the agenda?
No.
Okay. Bruce, welcome.
Hello.
Hi.
All set, bud?
All set?
Letting know about Fact TV.
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, I am.
Okay, just so you know, Fact TV is recording this, is logged in and is broadcasting this live on Facebook and YouTube, so.
Really?
Keep that in mind.
I feel like a celebrity, maybe that's your up for the few words, doesn't it?
There you go. Yeah, that's a great idea. Hi, Samara.
David?
Okay, so moving on to scheduled members of the public, we have both Sarah Wiswol and Samara Zwick here with us. Thank you both for joining us. We have no unscheduled members of the public unless we consider Fact TV to be an unscheduled member of the public in a weird way. All right, and let's quickly move on to 5, approving the minutes from the May 6 meeting. As we've been doing all this sort of go around and call on board members one by one so everybody has an opportunity to talk about all of the subjects, but starting with the minutes. Gwen, do you have any changes on?
No.
Pages one or two of the minutes?
No.
Shelby, any changes to either page of the minutes?
I don't see any.
Joseph, any changes to either page of the minutes?
No.
Bruce, any changes to anything on the minutes?
Yep. If you look at the recent thing, it says, "Recent issues?"
Yes.
Recent issues, I believe.
You are correct.
Doesn't happen often.
Anything else?
Nope, that's the only thing I saw.
Okay. Then I'd make a motion that we approve the minutes of May 6 as with that one amendment. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Shelby. I'm gonna give it to Shelby there. Seconded by Shelby, any further discussion? Here, now, all those in favor of approving the minutes for May 6 as amended signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? All right, then the minutes are approved. Which brings us to Agenda Item 6A, the financial and tax status. So that's why we've asked Sarah and Peter -- sorry, one moment. Peter is raising his finger.
Yeah? Yes, I believe the open meeting law has been amended for something to say that votes must be roll-call votes in online meetings.
What?
Roll-call, okay.
So if they're unanimous or without dissent, they're still necessary to be rolling?
The school votes are all calling the board and I don't have to name everybody's i's and n's, but they do roll-call it.
Okay, that's not how I have read any of the various interpretations of the new -- but...
Just FYI.
I think we'll stick with what we're doing for now. So moving on to 6A, so we've asked Sarah and Samara to join us to talk about basically what our situation is, which I guess that's the first place I'd like to start, is to sort of ask Sarah, after the deadline of the 15th, where do we stand generally on how much unpaid tax is basically like and how it compares to perhaps normal times? So Sarah, you want to maybe speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, I read a report and we have about $40,000 in outstanding taxes right now. There's a couple I know that I didn't process that are there, but other than that, I don't really know what's going on because there's quite a few unpaid. I don't hope maybe they're just a few days late because it was just -- but I'm not sure how that compares to normal at this time of year. Depends on where I know better.
Right. Well, and I guess I'm gonna ask our delinquent tax collector as well. Guy, how does -- do you have a sense of how that $40,000 open compares to a normal year?
Normally, we have between $26,000 and $30,000 on May 15 that are due. And with a little nudging and so forth, I can bring that down pretty quickly. But the $40,000 is about $10,000 more than normal, but I believe some people, for whatever reason, didn't come here because they thought the office might be closed and so forth. I think if we sent some notices out, that we should get a fair response to that. I don't see any serious problem. I think the town financially is in relatively good shape in comparison to the last couple of years.
Okay. That's very positive. Samara, I guess I'll just ask you from a historical perspective, is there -- does the number of $40,000 unpaid seem astronomically high or frightening to you by any means?
No. Actually, no, I think Guy is pretty spot on in what he said. The -- probably Sarah and Guy should talk among themselves and decide at what point to do the, you know, the delinquent tax warrant that officially calls them delinquent. Years past, there's always been a little bit of a grace period at the end of the year, but in the meantime, you know, if Guy can -- Guy will be pretty familiar with who the usual suspects are and who's unusual, so.
Yes.
And also, if you want to compare paper to paper, the historical list should all be in a notebook in the office, so you can, you know, cross-reference if you're really feeling like, if you really need to check that.
Okay. Sorry, Guy, you had something else?
I'm gonna request or ask the Select Board to waive the penalty until June 15. That will give people one more month and in the same token, I will send out notices letting people know that the penalty has been waived until June 15. And I think that's keeping in light what everyone else is doing, and I think it's fair.
That's a great idea.
So I think that's where we'll start and hopefully we'll see a respond and, you know, the normal people that, for whatever reasons, are always dragging their feet a little bit, I think again, if we give them the proper nudging, they will -- and if they do have any issues, they can approach the Select Board or the delinquent tax collector and there's also the opportunity for tax abatement. There's a lot of ways that they can go about this, but I think it would be good for the town and good for us to extend the deadline to June 15 before we consider any penalty.
I think that shows a real strong bit of compassion, like I told, like I said at our last meeting. Thank you, Guy, and he thought about it a little bit. I certainly appreciate it. I don't know, I think it's -- thank you, that's all I can say. I think that's a great idea.
Okay, so let's formalize that at least for discussion purposes. So I'd like to make a motion then that we advise the delinquent tax collector to waive the late penalty for fourth quarter tax payments until June 15.
Right.
Is there a second to that motion?
A seconded.
Seconded by Bruce. Okay, so now for discussion. Gwen, do you have any concerns about doing that?
No, I agree totally.
Okay. Shelby, what's your feeling about doing that? Any concerns?
No, I think that sounds great.
Okay, Joseph, how about you?
I think it sounds good. I'm just curious if this is just showing our agreement as the Select Board with the delinquent tax collector, this isn't -- he doesn't need to legally ask for permission for anything like that, does he?
Only because the government, the governor, has given the Select Board authority to waive penalties. This to me is a bit of a gray area because there are a number of delinquent tax collectors in the state of Vermont whose only compensation is the penalty. In our town, that's not the case. So for us, it works fine. The, like I said, the governor passed a law just a few days ago, giving the authority to the town to waive the penalty to whatever time they feel is a good time. And I think it's a good thing to do for our residents.
I think it shows a lot of compassion on the part of the Select Board. I'm 3,000% in favor of it. Sure you know that.
Yep. So Joseph, does that, yeah, does that clarify for you? It's unclear whether we really, whether he really needs us to give this approval, but I suppose it's mostly just an expression of our agreement with the approach.
Yeah.
Yeah, that closes it up. Again, I agree with this. I was just curious.
Yeah, no, it's a good point. Okay, any other discussion on this and let's just vote on that real quick.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is that just for the 8% penalty or is that including the 1% interest per month as well?
No, that is only the 8% penalty. The interest shall accrue as usual.
Okay.
That's the 8% penalty for late delinquencies.
Okay, so here, no further discussion. All those in favor of -- what did I say? All those in favor of advising the delinquent tax collector to?
Waive the penalty.
Waive the penalty for late payments of the fourth quarter tax payment until June 15 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? All right, so that passes. So getting back to the larger discussion of whether we have concerns about -- I mean, it sounds to me like at the moment, we don't really have any substantially larger delinquency problem than we would normally have, so that doesn't likely put us in any precarious situation as far as what our responsibilities are whenever we figure out what those responsibilities are for the education taxes, et cetera. Sarah, are you aware of any issues that we have currently as far as being able to make payments for whatever our upcoming responsibilities are?
We have enough to make our final school payment and still have about $60,000 left in the checking account.
Oui. I'll take some.
You get your Select Board money, that's it.
No way, Charlotte.
So, I mean, I'll go around and ask for everybody's opinion, but I guess I'll just, I'll start with myself and say that really then, based on that at the moment, I don't see any need for us to take any kind of actions to move money around or do anything like that because we seem to be still in a good place to be able to pay what we need to pay and move forward. Gwen, what's your feeling? Do you have any concerns or things that you think might be?
I agree with your?
Okay. Bruce, what is your feeling at the moment then about the tax situation? Any concerns or think we need to do anything?
Not at all. I kind of like the idea of giving everybody a little bit of a break that might have a late unemployment check or something and they gotta pay their tax bill. So I think the little leeway that we're giving is a nice thing to do and just showing everybody that we got a little bit of compassion. So that's information.
Okay. Shelby, how about you? What's your thinking on this?
I mean, I think it sounds like we're doing as well as can be expected right now and obviously not that off track of where we would have already been. So I think we should just keep being conservative and cautious and just carry on with it carrying on.
Joseph, how about you?
I agree with everything. Seems like we're doing as well as we could be given the circumstances.
Yeah, okay. All right, I think that then might do it for Sarah and Samara. Thank you both for joining. I mean, I'm glad that we're not in a situation where we have to be talking about more serious things. Any last comments or anything?
Recommendations?
Need from us, Sarah?
Oh, we were saying -- no, I think we're okay. I, it looks okay the numbers wise and that's what's important, so as long as we can -- so should we get the school payment ready for the next Select Board meeting then? Is that what you're recommending to me?
Oh, we have to do that.
Yeah, I mean, have we, have we, I mean, do we know what we're supposed to be paying for this at this point?
They'll give us a --
Um, I thought we -- 244, but this printout I have it saying 242, so.
That's all money.
But I can, I'm gonna double check before I do anything to make sure it's the correct amount.
Okay. So yes, I mean, I think we're, none of us are seeing any reason that we shouldn't be paying as we have to pay. Samara, any thoughts from you before you guys drop about anything we might not be thinking of that we should be concerned about or?
Well, no, come year-end, I mean, we'll just, we have, we have to probably do all the bank reconciliations and catch up on those and make sure everything's accounted for, but I think, I think you guys are pretty, got a pretty good handle on things, so.
I do. Any examples?
All right.
Nothing for me.
Awesome.
Barring, you know, barring some major weather calamity, I mean, that's the biggest, the biggest trouble.
So will we be able to close the books June 30?
Let's keep from having that.
Sorry? Will they be able to close the books June 30? That's the end of our fiscal year.
Yeah.
Right, so.
Oh, were you asking, will the books be?
I guess.
Were you just asking if the books could be closed by June 30?
Isn't that what we normally do?
No, usually what we do, we do on almost closed books by June 30. So all the bank recs will be done and?
Oh, yeah.
You know, any corrections to balance sheet items will be done, but you wait 60 days because you have 60 days if you need to account for tax collected between the end of your fiscal year and 60 days out, you can count them as revenue in the fiscal year. So by the end of August 31st, if necessary to prevent a deficit that would trigger other stuff, you can full accrue the taxes that the delinquent tax collector is able to collect in the 60-day period after you're enclosed. So that's when the final close happens.
I guess my only question is that with the appropriations which we normally mail out in August or September, do you suggest we just continue business as usual?
Well, of course, you take a look at the cash balance in August and then, then I would, I would consider that. I mean, the appropriations, I guess the biggest one, the biggest one that gets paid like an appropriation is the, is the fire department. It's actually in the normal operations, but the other appropriations are generally not what are going to break the bank. The biggest issue will be, well, actually, and we don't pay those until we collect the August 15 tax payments for the next year. So if things are at least a little more normal cash flow-wise by August and we don't have to defer those tax payments, I mean, that would be a different, a different kettle of fish, so to speak.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Sarah and Samara, for joining and helping with this.
Welcome.
Right.
I'm happy to chime in again and Sarah knows my phone number.
Goodness, ma.
Thank you, Samara. Thank you, Sarah.
Thanks, guys.
Goodness, Samara.
Oh, you guys are great. Thanks. I'm leaving now. Have a good.
Oh, Sarah.
You too.
Yes. Is it your birthday?
Yes.
That's right, it is.
Oh, my goodness!
Happy birthday, Sarah.
Happy birthday, Sarah. Oh, I wish we -- I wish we had the hamster.
Remember the live Facebook thing we were talking about?
It's live.
Samara.
How old are you, Sarah?
Forty-three.
Happy birthday to you.
Good job, Bruce.
Well done, Bruce. America's Got Talent.
You watching?
All right, well, happy birthday again. Good night, everybody.
Stay safe.
Thanks, guys.
Bye.
Bye.
Okay.
Bye, Sarah. Have a good night.
Moving on to 6B, maybe you could do this with less singing involved, Bruce. What's the update on Suzie's?
Okay, you ready for me?
Yes.
In light of, okay, this is what I've been doing for the last two weeks. Witches, two of the witches are gonna be delivered by Thomas Bloom pretty shortly and it's gonna encompass what we talked about last time, David, that we're not gonna do anything with the sand, although Olivia had requested to get a little sand for other needs. So I put her in contact with Alarone's group and they're gonna get their act together and get whatever she needs, since it doesn't really have anything to do with us. So as soon as I receive that we, the knowledge that we've got the, got the witches all at you and everybody else and Mark goes know that's happening.
Okay.
Secondly, secondly, before the meeting, yes, last night, I asked Sarah to send me a budget update of what we got in our account. We presently have $13,237.21. If you take the $95, you'll see in the, I love that, I love that, the appropriation, not appropriation, the bill that we got from, from the lady in town at the test of order, that should bring us to 13,132. And come 6,1, we should be up to 13,7. Now, in light, you know, I'm gonna ask, in light of the condition of the situation of our finances, in light of the fact that the town is no, thank the Lord, has had no cases of?
I'm sorry if you got it wrong.
From virus, neither is Westminster, neither is Marlborough, neither is Dumerson and Townsend and Newfoundland and some, as you can see, I follow this daily. And we've only had two deaths, two fatalities unfortunately, in the last 30 days. I think that this state's in very decent shape. In fact, as of last weekend, we were first in the country. Our neighbors to the east have over 80 fatalities, we've had 54. In light of all this and light of the finances, I would like to ask Norman Holden to start the windows. As of June 1st, I haven't spoke to Olivia about this in about 10 days, but they're, they're getting ready to open them full hog and so thanks, this is not gonna interfere with them. I will definitely, if we go ahead with this, I'm definitely gonna tell Norman Holden that I don't want them interfering at all with what's going on there. And if anybody enters that building while there's people there, I want masks, but I don't think that's gonna happen because his plan is this, is to take one window out at a time, put a piece of plywood on it, bring it home, fix it, and bring it back. So with all that being said, I'd like the permission from me to, to call him and move this forward. And as of June 1st, in light of any deducts, up minus $200 bucks, we should be somewhere at $9,000 after paying Norman Holden. So it's up to you guys.
Let's just go around and get people's feelings. Gwen, what's your feeling on giving Norman the go-ahead?
I think we should, I think we need to wait until June 15th. We have no idea what's gonna happen in a week or two weeks. You know, that, that.
Can I ask a question? What does that mean?
Just like I said.
The stay-at-home order is only to prevent the spread of the virus, which is up on June 15.
I'm not talking about the?
The governor is opening up parks, he's opening up on a limited basis in restaurants, all the restaurants on outside basis.
Bruce, hang on. Bruce, Bruce, Bruce.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Let Gwen, let Gwen clarify what she's saying. You asked her and you're not giving her a chance?
This has nothing to do with the stay-at-home order. This has to do with the town of Brookline's finances. We don't know what's gonna happen until June 15.
Why?
Well, because we still have $40,000 in unpaid taxes and we don't know, I think, I'm not just, I think Gwen's point is, we don't know, we have, it's not like we know for sure that we're gonna be able to collect that money. We hope we are and based on his history, we think we will be able to, but it hasn't happened yet. Right, Gwen, is that your point?
That's my point.
Okay.
So I think that if we wait and see how the finances are, to see how the, the opening up of other areas, I think it's just a safety that I feel more comfortable with. That's just my opinion.
Okay. Shelby, what's your thinking about the situation with the windows?
I don't know. I don't, I'm all for continuing to be cautious and everything, but I do think that we are in a pretty good position and that we've kind of halted everything at the moment and if there's anything we can kind of cautiously restart doing, I think that it's, you know, yeah, it's definitely more conservative for us to hold on to every penny, but it's also not bad for us to start putting money back into the local economy if it's money we need to spend anyway. And if we think that it's nothing that's gonna, I mean, if we don't collect $40,000, I mean, how much is this again, Bruce?
Fifty-five hundred.
Fifty-five hundred and we want the end-all, be-all when he's done doing it and we get the final invoice. So I, I guess my, I just, I guess I would wonder if this is the project we'd wanna do, but I'm not against having there be something that we do kind of give the go-ahead and start working on. So I guess it would be helpful for me, I guess it would've been helpful if maybe, and maybe anyone's heard from Mark, if there's any projects he's been putting off because of financial reasons, that might be more of a priority if we were gonna start having, you know, more billables happening, if that makes sense. If that makes sense.
Well, I mean, I guess I'll, I will, I haven't spoken
So I'm caught on the fence, but
Yeah, I mean, that, that's, tho- those are a totally different kettle of fish and, and some of the projects that we're holding off on are grant-related things that
So that wouldn't necessarily even impact this?
Yeah.
Whether or not we do this. Okay. Well, then I guess I'm caught on the fence. I'm, I'm not fully against it, but not really go-go.
Has to be lesser than.
Um, Joseph, what's, what's your feeling at the moment?
Financially, my biggest question would just be to know exactly if they, if Suzie's Little Peanuts is in a good financial situation moving forward. I know that they, they didn't have a problem paying their bills last month, but I'm just curious, it's still kind of up in the air whether daycares are gonna be able to continue to be financially viable with all the restrictions putting on. So I'm just curious if, uh, no.
Can I respond to that?
Uh, yes.
Well, everybody's, well, everybody's done and then I'll respond to what you're saying about that.
Okay, let me just chime in to say that I'll, you know, to some extent, I'm like Shelby, I'm a bit on the fence. I'm not particularly concerned about our ability to spend this money, but I'm also not completely sure that we should be spending any non-essential money at this point still, despite the fact that we might be in a slightly better financial situation than we feared. But the reality is, we don't know if there's, we don't know what the next month is going to hold as far as taxes that may or may not be paid and whether there's another wave of something, et cetera. So given all that, Bruce, what's your, what's your brief response?
Okay, okay, first off, as far as non-essential, I think, not essential is a strange term, but I think it's essential to take care of our buildings. Always add that. And now, what was it, you said, Joe, you were, you were just, you were mentioning that, oh, about Suzie's and about the liability Suzie, they had their check in at March 27th to pay their bill later.
Yes, I understand that, Bruce, but I'm just curious if, what their status is moving forward. They, it's not like daycare's
Their, their schedule is ready to open, okay, answer question. Full door on June 1st. I was told that two weeks ago. And seeing that, I, I watch this every day on, the, the three news reports of the governor every, every week. And well, the first thing that, that they mentioned was the opening of daycare centers as of June 1st. Up to now, Suzie's been operating, Olivia's been operating with just, I guess, essential kids from essential workers, which has been in a limited amount, but they were doing fine. And they're all real excited about opening up for June 1st. She told me this two weeks ago. And that's why she was sucking up the witches and all the other stuff. So for all intents and purposes, I, I, there's no way of us knowing what Suzie's finances are. But we do know the assistance that she's gonna get or has gotten. And we also know that the governor has opened them, opened them up full door as of June 1st. So with all that being said, and everything else I said about not feeling that this is what you would call an essential situation as far as letting, letting the building lie, we're going back to kind of same old, same old where we always kind of put off taking care of buildings, staying with the buildings.
Okay, Bruce, I'm gonna stop you right there because that's completely not a fair characterization of things. And if, if the, I think, we've, we've done an awful lot to support maintaining these buildings. Obviously, we put this out to bid, we accepted a bid. I think there's just concern, given that much about the world has changed, and we're just being cautious. I don't think anyone on the board has expressed a desire to no longer do this work. It's just a matter of when we feel that it's sensible to do it. All that being said, I would suggest make a motion and let's vote it. Make a motion on, make a motion that you want and vote on it.
Well, I want to ask a question first. I'm not done, ready to make a motion. What I want to ask is, are we gonna, what is, what's the limitations here? Are we gonna wait for every little dollar that gets collected? Let me, let me, let me be straight about this. Guy's an incredible job collecting cactus. I'm not saying he's gonna be, excuse me, Guy has nothing to do with you, of course, because of the situation. He's gonna have the same incredible job this year. So your question is all aside, but you just got through, finished it, listening to our two financial people, plus, plus Guy saying that we're in pretty damn good shape. And we're not talking fifty-five thousand dollars, you're talking fifty-five hundred. So saying all that, I will make a motion that we give Norman Holden the go-ahead to start working on the buildings, replacing the, fixing the windows.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Now we can have further discussion. Gwen, is there, are there further, is there, we'll go around. Gwen, is there further points you wanna make on this before we vote?
There's no other vote, no other, no other point than I, than what I had said before. I'm cautious.
Yeah. Shelby, any additional comments before we vote it?
No, I just, just, yeah, just on the fence, but I, I do think that we do have to, I think we have to, just like everyone else, start to figure out how to adjust to this situation. And part of adjusting it, that means we do have to make progress in what ways we can on things that we can. So that's kind of where I'm at.
Okay. Joseph, how about you? Any other comments before we vote it?
I just wanted to mention that even if we do collect all of these, any taxes now, there's no assurance that we won't have revenue shortfall in the future. I know a lot of citizens and everything are, are hanging on now, but that there's always the possibility for renewed number of cases, another shutdown, or just businesses having to close their doors due to what they've experienced. So, you know, we, we might collect all that forty thousand dollars, but then next tax day, we might have a, a larger shortfall that we won't be able to collect on. So I, I do think that it makes sense to be conservative with our money at this point.
Oh, God. Okay, can I chime in again?
Very quickly, very quickly.
David?
Yes, very.
Two things. We ran a shortfall in the previous years. And Guy, you can chime in for this. I'd like to hear this reaction if you don't mind. In that, we were thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars in the hole due to legal fees. And we ran that for quite some time. I'm not saying this is something which we did, we had no choice. We can always have a shortfall. We can never project what we're gonna get in August. We can never project what we can get in, in November. What we, what we can project is, we don't take the buildings, take care of the buildings, you know what's gonna happen. Now, saying that, we can go ahead and after what I said, but I would like, really like for Guy to chime in, give his opinion if you don't mind.
Yes, in, in regards to the, the incredible amount of legal fees that we, the town absorbed during that time, most of those fees were paid by penalties from delinquent taxes. I know you don't realize that, but sixty or seventy thousand dollars came from delinquencies. So it wasn't as a difficult bullet for the town as, as you might think. My own, my only concern, Bruce, is that I'm aware that we need to take care of the buildings. But I'm also concerned about the next tax payment coming up. The town must, we are under obligation to pay the education side of taxes all the time. If we don't, we go into a default and there is a penalty for that. So my only concern was just to wait until the meeting of June 17th. By then, we would have an idea of how much money we have if the school budget has passed because the school budget vote is on June 10th. So there's a number of things that are still up in the air in regards to setting the tax structure for the next season. So that was my only thing. Fifty-five dollars isn't a great deal of money, but by the same token, it is a lot of money. And I understand your concerns. You, you've done an incredible job. I'm just, I'm a kind of a conservative person only because the times are so challenging right now, it's not business as usual anymore. And I just think that to err on the side of caution might be advantageous at this point, just until the 17th. And I'm just asking for that two weeks so that we can get the school budget vote, see where we are with that. Because once the school budget vote is set, then the tax department, the treasurer, can set the next tax, taxes for the next year. Right now, we don't have anything.
I misunderstood. I thought Sarah said we had enough money, but we don't. Maybe I misunderstood.
No, we have enough money.
In that light, I'm gonna withdraw the proposal for now.
Well, I mean, you can always, we can always vote and then vote again.
All right, well, you know, whatever.
But it has
I don't think fifty-five hundred dollars is gonna make, it's gonna make totally squat difference on whether we owe money to the state or not. I mean,
Bruce.
Fifty thousand dollars.
We come up fifty-five hundred dollars short, I mean.
Okay, but, but Joseph, starting next month, we get sixteen hundred dollars a month. Starting the month after that, we get eighteen hundred dollars a month. At eighteen hundred dollars a month after that, this is being paid for by them. This is not being paid for by the town.
Okay.
Can I make one more comment?
Yeah, uh, yeah, and then I'm gonna go back to Bruce one more time. Shelby, we're gonna wrap this up one more time.
I would just say that in response to something, Joseph, that actually made me feel a little bit more like spending money could be a good idea. I think that the reason a lot of businesses are struggling right now and individuals who, you know, rely on self income income is because of people spending money from a position of not just caution, but downright fear of what might happen. So I, I'm thinking I'd probably more in favor of making a choice to have them start working on this. I, I, I guess I feel comfortable with, with the amount and potentially investing that money into the economy and how the proportion of our overall expenses are. I think that that's a safe bet, especially since we already decided to do it. So it's something we already have to come with and it's, it is, in my head, yes, it is fifty-five hundred dollars, which could be a lot, could be a little depending on how you're looking at it, but I, I think it might be important to do that.
Okay, Bruce, are you withdrawing the, or not?
No, I, the more I think about it, I'll just stick by my guns. I don't think it's that big of a deal for fifty-five hundred. And also, we're a bit out, we gotta, we, we saved up considerable money on the bed. There's nothing, we, we're not rescinding the bid to them, but there's nothing stopping him from saying, I changed my mind. I would really like to, I'd really like to push it forward. It's not as if someone asked me to suck words, like, hey, guys, look. The bid on the, the bid on the building, thirty-seven thousand dollars. We have a bid here, let's go forward and do it. This is not thirty-seven thousand dollars, fifty-five.
Okay, Bruce, we gotta wrap this up. Okay, so we're
I, I said my spiel.
We're bringing it to a vote then. Okay. So to reiterate, the motion is to give Norm Holden the go-ahead to begin the work on the window repair at the daycare building. We will do a roll call vote for this just to avoid any confusion. So Gwen Tanza, yes or no on the motion?
No.
No. Shelby Brimmer, yes or no on the motion?
Yes.
Bruce Mello, yes or no on the motion? Yes. Joseph Dutton, yes or no on the motion?
No.
And myself, David Jones, I am a yes. So the motion passes three to two.
I'll be along the screen.
Bruce, are you okay? Are you breathing?
Let's just not, let's not have him sing again, okay? Let's not make him happy.
This is live.
Does that
Thank you all for listening to me. I appreciate it. That's gonna be.
Okay. All right. Moving on to new business, 7A is the school budget vote. Guy, you wanna just give us a kind of quick
Just a quick
Details of where that stands now?
This is the third time it's been scheduled now and it looks like it's gonna be held June 10th. The five towns will be voting on the school budget along with a few other things, there's six or seven articles. Here in Brookline, we will vote with a few modifications. We'll have people who come in must wear face masks, must sanitize their hands, and we will supply sanitizer. We have a big program sending people, you know, letting people notify they can early vote or absentee ballot voting, which hopefully we will do. And hopefully, we will get this done. This is the 30th.
Do you need, I've put in my calendar to be here to count that night?
We don't do any counting here right now. We have to co, we co-mingle in the school district. So all of us
Don't we have to still, don't we have to still verify we've got the number?
We've got fifty-five, fifty-five.
We should have had
Yeah, we could, yeah, sure.
I mean, it's not a lot, but
No, I don't know. There's more pages.
Okay.
We get to count.
Yeah, if we, if we had two more, two more people, Gwen and I are gonna do it, and two more people that could help count on that evening, that would certainly be a
I can definitely be here to help count.
Okay.
Can anyone else from the board be here that night, June 10th, to help count for a little bit?
Well, that would be Seven o'clock.
Maybe, yeah, June 10th, that's a, that would be at
June 10th, a Wednesday at seven o'clock.
I, I could probably help.
Yeah, I could probably do that too.
Yeah, I'll probably do that.
Well, I think
I'll be covered. I'll cover that.
No, no, two, no.
Yes, I think in order to make this
Not so many to count.
Less complicated than everything else, it's liter, they literally only need two of us. I will be here, so we literally only need one of us.
Just because of my age and because I have to dress completely and all that shit.
Okay.
Or, and I could
So I guess I'll step out this time.
Okay, and unlike Bruce, I'm not old and not afraid to get dressed, so I will come and help count out.
Did you wear a mask, Shelby?
I will wear a mask.
Yeah, we will.
I don't wanna give any, I'll tell.
If two more want
We're gonna give any lectures. Did you call my buddy?
I think we can talk after the meeting about that.
Okay, sorry.
That's unrelated to select sports, but
Okay.
Okay, so Shelby and I will both be here to help count on night of
And Bruce, is Bruce gonna be?
Bruce isn't.
Oh, I thought he was, okay.
Well, but do we want, sorry, do we want
Legally, because he, legally, because he runs the thing.
I'm the election official, so
He's the election official. He's not supposed to be counting. But if it comes down, push
Okay, so Bruce, Bruce, how do you feel in hindsight about now coming? That night?
Who will be there?
Shelby, myself, Guy, and Gwen.
Five of us?
Yes.
Yes, which we need five because we need two sets of counters, not including Guy.
I have no problem as long as everybody's wearing masks.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yeah.
Well, just put you in another room.
I didn't know I needed help, but I don't have that damn
Oh, yeah. If anything changes, I'll let you know.
I'm afraid about it all. I have great preparedness.
Okay.
Okay, I'll help.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, anything else on that for the moment, Guy?
Nothing, that's all the other, the election, I have to
Okay, moving on to 7B, the COVID-19 impact survey. So Shelby,
Yeah, I don't know what I was, I, I had final week. I don't know why I thought I was gonna have time between last meeting and this meeting to do that. It was like the worst couple of weeks ever. So, so I didn't get to it, but I guess because I brought it up at the very end, so we didn't really touch base. Does anyone think it's a good idea to send out some kind of survey to the town to see, you know, how, how people have been impacted and, you know, kind of what that means and what they might need?
I mean, I guess I'll, I'll start, we'll go around. I mean, my, my feeling is, I'm not sure what we would necessarily do for anyone. So I'm a little hesitant to be asking people for what concerns they have when I think almost all of them would be outside of our purview to do anything about. But that's, that's just my feeling at the moment. Gwen, what's your thinking about it?
I agree with you. I, I don't really know what five of us can do for the community when, you know, we have our own concerns too. I just don't know how much it would be.
Yeah.
I just don't know how advantageous it would be. That's I just don't know how advantageous it would be, that's.
Uh, Joseph, what's your feeling about it?
Well, I think it would be a benefit to get a feel for how the community is dealing with this. Um, I don't think that there would be any implications that we would have to act on many of the information, but, uh, I do think it would be beneficial just.
Be interesting, I guess.
See how the community is coping.
Bruce, what's your feeling?
Yeah, help, help me along here a little bit. I missed kinda the beginning of it, I was a little distracted. So, are we considering, um, sending out a survey, everybody just find out how they're doing? Is that what we're doing here? We're considering?
Yeah, just kinda like sending out something to get, get an idea of, of, you know, kind of the, the scope of who has been impacted and how. Um, and maybe, maybe even asking in addition, or just even just getting a survey to see how our community's doing, but then maybe also asking to see, you know, what people, what's lacking right now in terms of support. Even if it means, even if it's not support we could offer, just seeing what, what people are needing right now.
Is this gonna be just done on, on the listserv?
Yeah, it could be. It could be a listserv, like a Google form that we have, um, Julie sent out, um, Julia or Julia, I forgot. But, um, yeah, I mean, just something, something informal, just to help us gather information about how our community's doing, how they've been impacted and what's, what's missing, if there's anything missing in the support that they're getting or, you know, anything like that. We're kind of given unprecedented time, so my thought is just to confirm that information as we are the representatives of the town, so to just know how they're doing.
Um, I agree with Shelby a thousand percent. I think in light of what we, uh, what we did for the taxes and, and giving a replay of it, this is just another step in the compassionate, um, realm, and I think, um, I think it's a great idea.
Um, okay, so then what are next steps on that? Shelby, do you wanna draft something?
Yeah, I'm in between semesters, so I will happily draft something. No, I can definitely draft something up, um, and, and it's gonna be more informal. I can, I can send it out to you guys. Um, and then we can, we can look at it next meeting, if that makes sense.
Yeah, why don't we do that? We'll put it on the agenda for next time, and we can take a look at, uh, and discuss whatever's drafted and see what we think.
Cool.
Yeah, cool. Um, okay, moving on to seven C, Green Up Day. Uh, it's gonna be a week from Saturday. We'll see how that goes.
We might have a tiny bit of conflict if that, if that, if those witches come alive, um, Dave, I'm supposing, I had to talk to Olivia, but I don't see why it couldn't be put off for another week if we were doing Green Up Day, so I'll just leave that.
Yeah, oh, I definitely won't be able to do anything that weekend.
Is Archie gonna have the truck again?
Yeah, uh, that whole weekend. The Saturday or Sunday, I'm totally, my weekend is taken up.
Okay.
So, yeah, so I guess if, and, you know, now that I'm thinking of it, I'm pretty much taken up this weekend also. So, wood chip wise, for me personally, the earliest I'm gonna be able to do anything at this point is whatever the first weekend in June is. Um, but, but getting back to Green Up, so, yeah, so Archie is gonna have his truck again. Um, I've heard back from, I sent out an email to the listserv yesterday or the day before yesterday. I've gotten a couple of people who've asked me for bags. Um, the plan is, and I think I sort of detailed it in that, is, you know, no one, no one's coming in the town office. Everything will be done in the parking lot, so either I will have gotten bags to people in advance, or people will come and I'll leave, I'll set bags on the table and they will pick up their bags and leave. And then, um, Mark and I will go around and grab stuff later in the day and will. The thing that I mentioned in the email, and I'm, uh, I know as we get closer, I'm gonna hear more from people about this. You know, in, in years past, we have done some extraordinary, uh, cleanup of the trash dumping areas on Ellenware Road and Pucky Mountain Road. Um, Mark and other people and myself, we're not doing that this year. Um, at least I'm not doing it, and I think it's unlikely that other people, unlikely that other people will be doing it, 'cause it's just gonna be impossible to do with those things while also keeping ourselves safe. So, uh, we're, we'll focus on what Green Up is supposed to be, which is picking up roadside trash. And, uh, hopefully we'll have a decent turnout and we'll get as much cleaned up as we can.
You know what, Dave? I'm gonna take a little ride, definitely wanna entertain this, up along our road and see how bad it is this year. Just to get those, just to see if, if the road trash was dumped. You pulled a lot of crap out of there, didn't you last year?
Yeah, we, we do it every year. We do it every year, and it's all, it's filled back up like the next day. It really, it's, you know. Uh, but that's fine. It is what it is.
I'll look, I'll look anyway. I'm up and down that road a fair amount. I'll check out, see. I don't think we can blow it off, but maybe, maybe we can lucky this year around.
Yeah, I mean, the reality is people blow it off for 364 days of the year, every year, so. Uh, okay, moving on to summary updates. Mr. Tanza, what's going on? What else is going on in the town?
Um, it's been relatively quiet. We haven't had many deed searches, uh, we haven't had, uh, too many title searches. Um, but we've had many, many questions. A lot of people, you know, have lost their tax bills, have lost this, they, they're looking for some information. So, we've been busy that way. Sorry, Peter?
I'm not able to hear Mr. Tanza.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We'll get him closer to the microphone.
Also, somebody is making a lot of paper shuffling noise and something is very.
Uh-oh, I got mewed again, Joseph.
There is a mute switch on these things. You should use it.
Where is that?
He's on the phone.
I don't see him muted, all right?
He's on the phone.
He's on the phone, yeah. It's like it's star six or something like that, I think, to mute yourself.
Oh, I don't know, this stuff.
I can mute you. I'm gonna mute you for a little bit, Bruce. All right, sorry, Guy.
Can you hear me, Peter?
It's okay, Nick.
Can you hear me, Peter?
Yes.
Okay, so, in regards to the town office, um, we're, we're still abiding by the governor's, uh, directive in having people wear face masks. Uh, we've limited the amount of people that can come in. Um, until June 15th, we'll see what happens. We haven't had a lot of title searches. There haven't been a lot of, um, sales of homes. Uh, but we've had a lot of, we've been getting a lot of phone calls, people concerned about taxes, concerned about different things that are going on in town. So basically, it's business as usual, except that we don't seem to have as much foot traffic coming into the office.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
As always. Um, no highway update from Mark. I was gonna reach out to Mark this week, but I didn't. Um, as far as I'm aware, he's still just grading things as the need arises, uh, and.
There was a, there was a sizable bill for equipment for the grader. Did the grader break down or something?
Yeah, I mentioned it a couple of meetings ago. He had to get, yeah, he had to order parts for the grader a month ago, something like that. Um, 'cause he had to do a number of repairs to it. Uh, okay, moving on to communications. Email communications, to be honest, I didn't do my usual printing out of some stuff, but there are a couple of things that I will, that I will note that have come through. One is, we have been, uh, there's a new project manager on the Salt Sand Shed, um, with Wyndham Regional, uh, named Margot Gia. Um, however, I also just received an email earlier today from Chris Campney that, I'll read it very quickly. So, so, a week or two ago, Chris emailed that Margot was gonna be taking over project management. She started reaching out to Ron Bell and getting caught up, things like that. So I thought everything was moving along with that, but now I've received an email saying, from Chris Campney, the executive director of Wyndham Regional Commission, saying that he's been informed that when there is a change from one municipal project manager to another, the new candidate must be vetted through the same process as the initial candidate. So he has given me a copy of Margot's resume, um, and is asking for the town to confirm that Margot is acceptable as a project manager for this. My recollection, and I haven't yet, I literally just got this a couple hours ago. I haven't gone back to research this, but my recollection, when we, we chose Wyndham Regional Commission to be our project manager, we never chose, uh, the woman's name escapes me at the moment, who was the project manager previously. Uh, anyway, sorry, I'm blanking on what her name was, but in any event, we never chose her as a project manager. They assigned it to her. So my feeling is, it's still their responsibility to assign us someone suitable. I don't want us to be getting into evaluating resumes for their employees as to whether they are capable to fulfill a job that we are not experts at ourselves. Um, so, long way around saying, I'm gonna email Chris back and clarify that I don't see where we need to. This is a discussion for them to have with Vtrans. If Vtrans has concerns about the person, that's a different thing. Um, but anyway, that just came through, but so, I assume everything will be fine and Margot will be our project manager moving forward. Um, that's, so the back and forth about that is probably the only real emails, emails of substance that have come through, I'd say. Um, and looking at physical mail, um, we received a request from the listers, from Marcia O'Monde and the other listers, that, uh, the Department of Taxes, the Vermont Department of Taxes, has given the COVID-19 situation, is allowing municipalities to have an extension until August 15th to complete their grand list details. But in order to get that extension, the listers have to request it, and they have to have the support of the select board to do that. So our listers have requested to have this extension. I will say informally, they don't think they need all the way until August 15th, but they need a little bit more time than June 4th, which is when their current deadline would be. So, I am going to, just for formality sake, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the lister's request for an extension of the grand list until August 15th. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Gwen. Um, now for discussion, I'll go around. Gwen, do you see any concerns with giving them?
I, I don't, I don't think so. I mean, it's.
Sorry, somebody, um, somebody's speaking in the background. Sorry, hang on. Uh, Gwen, what's, what's your thinking about this? Do you have any concerns?
No.
Okay. Uh, Joseph, any concerns with giving the listers, uh, what they've asked for?
No.
Bruce, any concerns?
No, absolutely not. I think that's a good idea.
Okay. Shelby, any concerns or any questions? Okay, then all those in favor of, uh, agreeing with, or, uh, whatever I said, granting, or supporting the lister's, uh, request for an extension of the grand list until August 15th, signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay, so then I will sign this and make some copies and we'll get it sent off. Um, next in, uh, mail is we received from Coda and Coda. Um, it looks like, oh, a budget payment. Do we do this?
Yeah, we do. No, we don't do the budget. We do the, uh, the, the plan for the service contract.
Yeah, right, but this is just the budget payment.
Yeah, we don't do that. We've never done.
Okay, all right, so we've received an offer for a budget payment plan from Coda and Coda, which we have not historically done. Um, so I'm going to suggest that we continue to not do it. Does any, I'm not gonna go around. Anyone have objections to skipping the plan that we never did? Speak now.
Not at all.
Uh, okay, so that's that, and then the only other, we got a postcard from the Southern Vermont Economy Project about some virtual workshops that they're doing in June and September and winter. They're already talking about winter. Uh, and then we have a very nice VLCT news. It's good to know that nothing is getting in their way of producing these newsletters. Uh, and that's, that's all the communications we've got. So now moving on to pay orders. Um, first up is the payroll, uh, warrant. I came in and signed this on May 13th, when it was due, uh, but we will now vote it and approve it. I'll go around like we've been doing. Um, Gwen, have you reviewed the payroll warrant from May 13th, and do you have any questions?
Yes and no. Yes, I reviewed it, no questions.
Yes, you reviewed it, no, yeah, I know, I ask that in a confusing way, don't I? Uh, Bruce, have you reviewed the payroll warrant? Do you have any questions?
Yes, I did, and I don't have any questions. Excellent.
Okay. Shelby, have you reviewed the payroll? Do you have any questions?
Uh, yeah, I reviewed it, no questions.
Uh, Joseph, have you reviewed it? Do you have any questions?
Yes, reviewed, no questions.
Okay, excellent. Then I'd like to make a motion that we approve payroll warrant 2020-46, dated May 13th, 2020, in the amount of $1,161.73. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bruce, he's getting quick at this. Uh, any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving payroll warrant 2020-46, dated May 13th, 2020, in the amount of $1,161.73, signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Any extensions? All right, the payroll warrant is approved. Uh, next up is the accounts payable warrant. Uh, we'll go around again. Gwen, have you reviewed the accounts payable warrant, and do you have any questions?
Yes, reviewed, no questions.
Okay. Bruce, have you reviewed the accounts payable warrant, and do you have any questions?
Yes, no, I guess I reviewed it, and yes, I'd roll it up to ninety-five dollars, but.
For the water touching, yeah. Okay. Um, Shelby, have you reviewed the accounts payable warrant, and do you have any questions?
Uh, yeah, I reviewed it. I'm just curious, what were the, um, what's the envelopes charge? I know they're probably envelopes, like, I mean, is that like, were, were there?
That's for.
The town clerk chatted again.
That's a thousand, uh.
Hang on a second, quiet.
Those are the office envelopes that the town uses, a thousand with the clear face, and a thousand the regular, we get them every two years.
I think, I think there were anything specific around taxes, and I didn't know if there was, or if that was just like a routine, I didn't know if it was specific.
No, there'll be another invoice. There will be another invoice for the tax envelopes, which we just got 500 of those.
Okay, cool, okay.
Any other questions, Shelby?
No, that's all.
Okay, Joseph, have you reviewed the accounts payable warrant, and do you have any questions?
Yes, I've reviewed it, no questions.
Okay, all right, and I'd like to make a motion that we approve the accounts payable warrant 2020-47 dated May 19th, 2020, in the amount of $1,389.07, is there a second?
I second it.
Seconded by Gwen. We gotta let other people do some things. Any, any discussion, no, hearing none, all those in favor of approving accounts payable warrant 2020-47 dated May 19th, 2020, in the amount of $1,389.07, signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? All right, the accounts payable warrant is also approved. Which brings us to agenda. For next time, we will, our next meeting will be June 3rd. We'll talk about the COVID-19 survey. We, I assume, Bruce, you'll want a little SLP update?
Probably have something to say, Russell, right?
I'm going to.
I'll have an update on the chips, and we'll see how we're doing with the.
Yeah, okay, we'll save that for the update, though. I said we'll save that for the update.
Okay.
Other, I guess I'd suggest, maybe if we do put on something in particular to talk about, if the delinquent tax collector is okay with it, just an update on where things have stand on tax collection, maybe we'll call it.
Okay.
Guy, do you need an update on the school vote in case something else changes before the town?
If there's any, anything changes, I'll be more than happy to let you know.
Yeah, we can add it or whatever.
Right now, it doesn't look good.
I will probably do a little brief debrief on green up. Other agenda items that you can think of, Gwen?
Hmm, no.
Bruce, any other agenda items you can think of at the moment?
Uh, no, not like so.
Shelby, any other agenda items you can think of at the moment?
Oh, okay.
Joseph, any other agenda items you can think of?
No.
Okay.
Did you put down the COVID-19 survey that?
Yes.
It's okay.
Yep. Okay, then I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn, is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Bruce. Okay, all those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, then we are adjourned at 7:44?